Thank you everybody again for attending the February Board meeting for Central School District 13J. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications, Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the Board, please fill out a comment card and turn it in to the Board Secretary or the Board Chair at the beginning of the meeting. And she's over there. Speaker's comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the Board welcomes additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approved processes outlined in Board Policy KL. This form may be found on our website or by calling the district office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board to review and issue. However, the Board Chair or other Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication, and if so, what avenue is preferred. And thank you for your attendance at this meeting of the Central School Board again. So that brings us down to the adoption of the agenda.
We just have one change. We are going into Executive Session, which was on the agenda, but there are actually two items. So we're going to be looking at areas under ORC 192662A as well as 2B. So obviously, the first is dealing with employment, and the second is dealing with potential discipline complaints or other charges brought against an employee. So we're going to be, again, we just want to be transparent in that we will be going into Executive Session to really look at under two areas tonight.
So at this time, do we have any communications or optional reports? Just standing here. We're postponing the Board Rec-
She just walked in, so we-
Oh, I missed that. I was reading the card.
We get to go.
Back to Item C under 1, I turn it over to you.
So obviously, last month was School Board Recognition Month, and we did have a couple of Board members that were excused from the meeting. And so one of them is here tonight. The other is excused because she is, we hope she gets a break here soon. Just she's working through some things, and her health is what's important right now. So I just want to share with you, because you weren't here, so I have a little bit to share. The theme of Board Recognition was superheroes. And so I have done some research with really authentic people that know the Marvel comics, which are students and kids. And so I just want to start out by recognizing you. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about who you remind me of, and why those qualities, as well as you, there's a gift that we have for you. One of the key things that I'll share with you as we give you your, a couple of gifts that you have. It's really important to me, and you know this, that we continue to allow kids to learn and grow in reading. And there are many different types of ways to read different things. So one of those gifts is tied to that as we go through this. So Director Darcy Kirk, you remind me of Supergirl. Supergirl has traits of being a kind-hearted and optimistic superhero. She is seen at times as having super strength to be able to tackle many different things at one time. This reminds me of you, Darcy, as I watch you tackle the role of parent, community member, businesswoman, and Board member, and trying to at times balance out what that really looks like, if there is such a thing in balance in that. So I just want to thank you for your service within the school district. And so I would like you to come up to get your two gifts in recognition of appreciation. So here is your card of superpower. And then this is a student art out of Ash Creek.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You can ask the others of their superpowers at some point.
I have those superpowers. Any communications? All right, so that puts us down to student reports. So Mr. Love, that puts you in the hot seat up there.
So we had a pretty big, you guys hear me? We had a pretty big month. We just finished finals week last week. So that was good. Second semester started today. Two weekends ago, we had the snowball in the gym. If you remember me telling you guys that that's the first time in eight, nine years we had it down there. Pretty well received. We had the jazz band play. They walked through everybody. Couple, about 45 minutes into the dance, so that was really cool. Everybody kind of just made space for them, and it was really special. Unity Week was tied into that, too, where we had voice panels for an assembly during school one of the days, where we had a couple of teachers and students talk about different struggles they've had in their lives and their backgrounds. Where then, at the end, they would come out kind of anonymously, and then they would be revealed as part of our community at the school. Also, we had some more lighthearted things like bingo and candy creams that you could send to your friends. And then we're still looking forward to Pageant, Mr. and Ms. Central, coming up in April. So we're really gearing up for that, and Asbeck is kind of, it's coming up on our radar. So that is pretty much it. Good. We're looking forward to the second semester, my last semester, actually. It's good. Thank you.
So ladies, you're up. You did bring your third with you.
Hi, we're Noemi and Malandra, and then we're from the Power Peers class. We've been really busy in 2018. Last month, we shared a school-wide video lesson prompting the O in our matrix, which stands for ownership. Students were encouraged to take ownership of their actions and make a plan to finish a semester strong. We also shared regulating tools to help students and staff stay calm and reduce anxiety. The square breathing approach that is explained on a handout was used by several teachers during finals week. This handout and treat were given to all students during the ownership lesson.
And then tomorrow, we're going to be attending a statewide student health advocacy day at our state Capitol, where we will meet with other students from the causes state and legislators to discuss the health needs to ensure all students have access to healthcare and resources. We have also scheduled three private meetings with our local senators and representatives to talk about our school-based health center and what a valuable resource it is to our students. And then later this month, we're going to be sharing another school-wide video, encouraging work ethic and sharing other trauma-informed approach to help students understand how to keep from flipping their lids. And then we'll share more about this with you guys next week.
Our pantry served 163 students in January, and it's still going strong. We actually brought you guys a treat from our ownership lesson. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Do you guys want, maybe you go back and talk about this with the Power Peers, but would you want Board members at your meetings with the senators? Or are you talking about the whole thing?
Well, it's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's short news. I'm looking for something to do.
We're leaving school at 7:40, so I'm not sure. Maybe talk to Ms. Wilson about that. We'll let Ms. Arthur know.
So if you're interested, maybe push the idea and get mine out.
I think that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Miss Jo, do you want to answer that?
No, I wanted to make a comment.
Oh.
But it's a nice speech. I just wanted to say something.
Is it in regards to the Power Peers?
Well, no, although I can say a million no's. No, it's about the stuff all of those.
Come to the mic.
Yeah, come on up.
Thank you very much.
And the Power Peers are marvelous. I have nothing but the highest praise for them and what they do. So the situation with, I probably don't even need a mic, but I'll talk this way anyway. The snowball, they came to me and wanted to have it in the gym, and I went, eh. It's a really nice gym floor. I'm not thinking that high heels are good for that. And they promised that it would be good, and Mr. Hedrick approved it. So we said, okay, you guys, let's see what you can pull off. And it was fabulous. Girls coming in gorgeous ball gowns with tennis shoes. And we had a shoe-check station where some girls came in heels, took their heels off, checked the shoes like it was a hat check at some fancy restaurant. The kids transformed the gym into this fairyland of twinkle lights. It was a joy for supervision because the adults could walk around in the upper level, look down on the kids. They were perfect. The jazz band coming through was incredible. You guys, our kids pulled off a magnificent snowball. They really deserve credit for this. It was great. So Andrew didn't say that because he's too modest, but I wanted to sing the praises of the group. So it was fabulous.
So we passed Public Comments. So we're up to CE A.
All right. All right. We'll talk into this. I'm Cameron Bogers. I'm the fifth grade teacher, one of the fifth grade teachers over at IES. And I'm also the union representative for our building. And I put together just a quick little PowerPoint about some of the positive things that are happening in our school. I'm sure I've missed many of the positive things that are happening, but these are some of the big ones. So we've been refocusing on our heart skills. And right now, we have kind of continued on to the accountability. We started with hope, empathy, accountability. And then we have a chant that goes along with each one of those. And we've been using our morning time, right after our team time, to kind of do a little mini-assembly where some of the kids will come up based on the grade level, and they will act out what this might look like, what accountability or respect might look like. So that has been positive. We also have, we've been handing out little hearts to go along with that. Whenever teachers catch students doing one of the heart skills, and then we're putting it into a big wagon that's on our ramp down to our lunchroom. This is the new shirt that we have, using one of those kind of wordles. And so that's really nice. We really like it, and it's available. I think we can put in more orders, right?
For $10.
$10. It's a wonderful thing. With our classes, our kindergarten classes have been really focusing on their literacy. They've had some wonderful PD days where they've gotten together as a great little team and have been really focusing on what do we need to do to bring those kinders up so they're ready to continue strong reading all the way through. This is just some of the things. Kinder reading buddies, we have fifth grade students that are working with our kinder classes, but not just going and reading with them. Sometimes it's the kinders reading to us. It's also working with the sight words and letter recognition and sound recognition. So it's not just like, hey, we're coming to read. We're actually having the fifth graders help to kind of teach some of those skills and catch them on that, which has been great for both classes, both fifth, having to model that respect and responsibility, as well as the kinders getting, oh, our fifth grade buddies are here. This is great. And, you know, it's like, hey, you're still learning literacy, but in another way. So that has been a really positive part of our year this year. Oh, oh. In the community, we're having our OSU Science Night again. This was really kind of started last year with our third grade teacher, Carla Archer, and a parent, Virginia Glassman, who is now an IA for part of the day. And so what they've done is just, she knows, Virginia knows a lot of people in the engineering department at Oregon State. And so they've just gotten a lot of the stuff together. They come, they provide everything. Teachers don't even really have to set up, which is wonderful. So then, and it's just open to the families. Last year, I believe we had 140 people come. And so this is actually this Thursday night, and we're looking forward to it. Just a great way to expose our community, not just our students, to science, math, and STEM and all those. Fourth grade has been doing pen pals with their Oregon, Western Oregon students. And what that might be is having problems. The Western Oregon students will create problems, and they'll send it. And then they've been typing this, but having conversation back and forth. There's one on there, this was a really easy problem. It was really challenging, but really easy, you know? And then like, I really like dogs as well. And so it's just been, it's a good way to kind of change math up and present it in a different way, you know, helping new teachers become better able to help the students' needs as well as students interacting with the different peer set. Another thing, and this has been done in previous years as well, but this year, also the Rotary Club supported literacy at IES by sharing dictionaries with all of our fourth graders. When I presented this slideshow during, right after lunch with my kids, they're like, we got those, too. So it's definitely something that the Rotary Club has been doing, which is wonderful. We always need dictionaries. And our wonderful Parent Club has been working with our school to kind of help, not kind of, but to fill, better fill the need of one-to-one ratio for devices to students. One-to-one is where we want to be. They've worked with us to be able to, I believe, get a couple more Chromebook carts that will help to alleviate that two-to-one, at least get two-to-one in our upper grade levels, three through five. And then also that provides a cart for the lower levels, at least one through two, possibly K, where we want to have at least Chromebook stations, where they have that exposure to get on and start typing. Because with Common Core standards, typing in words per minute is now a standard, and it keeps increasing throughout the grade levels as well. So it's just wonderful that they are able to provide that to kind of help fill that need. So that'll be really great in terms of getting that one-to-one, which is the kids need it. It's part of our world. And, if I get this right, so this is a continuing PBIS. Our fourth grade team is putting this together as part of that, teaching those heart skills, where this time they're doing a little bit through a video. It's not done. There will be a student section. I don't know if this, if I hit play, does it just go, or does it go past? It went past. I think.
Is there a play button?
If I'm ruining everything, I apologize. Yeah, I think you just click on it, it'll go. There we go. Okay, thank you. So we've obviously been having some bathroom problems. And fourth grade put this together. This is just with the iMovie maker, which I am thoroughly impressed that they found this. It was some great cut scenes, especially that eye right at the end, because there's always that kid, anybody in here? So the other part of this will be, the students will then model the proper way to do all these different things, how to get to the bathroom and do all those reminders that we need. And so that's where IES is. And like I said, there's many other things wonderful happening there. And that's what I was able to put together.
Going once, going twice? I have to give Denise a bad point. So administrative reports, we have none. Is that going to change? We're down to financial. That goes to C's.
Thank you. That report should be at your place at the table. So I'm sorry that that didn't get sent out sooner. The, this is our quarterly reports. We have the detailed financial budget year-to-date for December 31st. And my little summary on the front sort of highlights some of the things to look for. Nothing of particular concern at this point in our budget process other than we are bringing in more property tax revenue than planned. That would be a good thing if it didn't mean that next year, ODE will take away some of the state school fund they gave us to offset the additional property taxes that we're getting in. But it all comes out in the wash. I think the other good news for our financial report is that ballot measure 101 did pass in the special election in January. We were prepared that the legislature, which started meeting today, would be making adjustments that actually could have affected our revenue payments this year as well as payments next year, the second half of the biennium. But because that did not happen, we do not plan to make any major budget adjustments at this point. So I'm sorry, didn't have much time to look it over. If you do have any questions you'd like to ask now, Mr. Wall, I would take them. Otherwise, I would certainly entertain questions that you're welcome to call me in, if you have any.
She got your number, Dawn.
No, that's good.
Well, with a challenge thrown down, I'll have to go.
I know. I'll be here on me.
Why is additional salary at 97%?
Which I address in my little summary.
But I just wanted to read this.
Oh, good. I got one. I knew you'd get. The additional salary line, which is in that sort of 100 section on the expense, it's object number 130s. Those are where we put extra duty stipends. But they are also where we put the extra hours that our salaried people put in for professional development, for example. So if we have general fund money going towards training or development, classified staff would get paid their normal salary. Teachers get paid under extra hours outside of their contracted hours. Or if classified folks come in on days they are not scheduled, that would go under there. Since our PD is very heavily weighted in the summer and fall, we have those in-service days, grade days, things like that, where we've been pulling in teams and folks for training. That's showing up there. So not a great concern yet. Overall, our salary line is still well tracking within budget.
And Dawn, I think that will be one of the, because we're starting to just talk about budget and professional development and just where we want to go in the future. I think that could be an area where we potentially will see a change in budget because we need to make that even a more priority in working with our staff, getting input from them and what that might look like in the future as well. So we sort of have started those conversations already.
So not to start the budget discussion early, but just looking at, I had a little bit. Do we have any, I mean, this is the second half of the biennium. There should be no surprises. Do we have any big issues coming up?
Right. After ballot measure 101 passed, we're not nearly as concerned other than just our roll-up and sort of where we're going to be coming down in negotiations coming up with both groups. A little bit difficult to project because we don't have that process completed. So our budget will be prepared with some rough estimates in mind and see how that process goes. Property taxes should be holding steady, though are continuing. We're, yeah, the continued development, it looks like. And collection, that's the other piece of property taxes is we're collecting more of the property taxes to assess. Continued growth in that area.
I heard the governor's worried about money at education again.
That's what she said this morning.
The year after the tax should be even better.
That's right. Yeah, we hope. So the other report that's attached is our quarterly risk management report, and that is from July 1st through December 31st. And that generally looks really good. There is a large amount in our auto liability. It's in reserves. That is not an actual expenditure so far. There was an incident that was settled without paying for insurance, but they put a reserve on it in case there are any additional expenses. The workers' comp looks really good for the first half of the year.
Fine wood.
And I also typically give a transportation report. I don't really have a report, although I did, something had just recently come up. And that is a new law went into effect which requires the school district to transport foster children to their district of origin if necessary, to keep the continuity, keep kids in the schools they're comfortable and familiar with. We do this currently with homeless students. Other districts, I found out out of one of my business officials' meetings, are relying on taxis. They're relying on Uber and Lyft to transport students across districts. And luckily, so far, wood again, we have, we already have agreements with our neighboring districts. So all of our contiguous districts, Salem, Dallas, Corvallis, Albany, we currently share transportation for students that are homeless or in foster care. We drive into Salem and meet a Salem Kaiser bus and transfer the kid, and they take that kid on to their destination. So currently, we don't anticipate having to do a lot more to be able to help these students continue in the school districts in which they are familiar and comfortable. So that was something that was recently brought to, thank you, that was brought to our attention, and we will be able to provide it easily. The interesting part is the state is talking about reimbursing these trips for foster students at 100%. Currently, they take all of the miles we travel and reimburse us for 70% of our cost. That would actually be at 100%. So if we do end up having to transport those students in some special routes or take some additional measures to transport them, it actually is supposed to come with money from the state. But currently, we're just going to keep working within the way we have.
Can I ask a question about the budget? Why are the substitute lines running so far below?
Yeah. That is because of our switch this year. We actually are not paying our substitutes out of our payroll, for the most part. So those payroll lines, the way that our budget works and the way our chart of accounts works, that would come if we were paying them directly. This year, we contracted out the payment of substitutes, teachers and classified, to a third party, EduStaff is the name of the firm. So folks who want to substitute in our district other than transportation, and transportation is not part of this, because of, obviously, a little more difficult to sub those guys out or have a third-party staffing agency hire them. So this third-party staffing agency comes in, and they hire all of our substitutes. That service is actually being provided through the WAMAD ESD. So what happens is, we're not, because the ESD has a pot of money that is set there to provide services to us, they are just kind of using that pot of money to pay this temporary staffing agency, this substitute staffing agency.
Is your tier 1 dollars in, or tier 2?
What's up?
Tier 1 dollars, or tier, is that what you're using?
Yeah, right. So our, so what typically would happen is, we typically get a bunch of money from, well, we have a pot of money- we have a pot of money at the ESD. We purchase services we can't provide ourselves. Speech-language pathologists, a lot of special ed services. We can't hire those people ourselves typically. So we purchase the service directly from the ESD. Then, if there's money left over, they typically just pass that through to us. They actually write us a check. And we continue, we use that in general fund dollars. This year, we didn't account for that income to come into our district, and we didn't account for all of the substitute costs. We just left that at the ESD. So it's actually reducing our revenue and reducing our expenses.
Do we still get some visibility into how, how we're utilizing substitutes?
Yes, we get some really great reporting from them, and Rich and his team are looking at that so that we can see. They, they do provide us with a report every two weeks. Our subs used to get, have to wait to get paid once a month for us, and now they get paid every two weeks by the staffing agency. But we get some good reporting about utilization and fill rates, how they're doing on filling our vacancies versus how we used to do, which was a struggle sometimes, so. I think, I don't know that you have anything you've looked at recently.
Yeah, we, we entered into this arrangement with the ESD this fall. We explored it all last spring, along with multiple other districts that are, that are utilizing the EduStaff service. EduStaff is a, originally was a company from the Midwest. They have expanded into Oregon and hired reps here in Oregon. One of the challenges you may recall from a couple of years ago was the legislature passing laws that required sick time be provided to all employees. Well, that included subs. And trying to get a handle on how we would account for sick leave for a substitute, to provide a substitute for a substitute was beginning to be a bit crazy on how they could do that. Especially when we have subs that would work in multiple districts. The, the other issue is revolving around some of the issues with PERS. And quite frankly, we have very few subs that rise to the level of the district paying PERS on their behalf. But that did occur for some of our subs. That is not an obligation that we have going through EduStaff. And quite frankly, that's part of the fees that they absorb some of for us. So we're also looking to expand our, our sub pool. You may have seen the, the signs outside of all the schools on EduStaff. So I'd encourage you, if you have folks that, you can refer to them. We have links on our website to get to EduStaff and make an application for that. Like many, many organizations, it's getting more and more difficult to find employees at particularly subs.
So that, thank you for that explanation. So is this budget line correct then, the 277, 616?
So the, what we had to leave in there, based on some prior year, prior year's utilization of substitutes, that pot of money we have sitting at the ESD will probably not cover the entire sub-line cost. So if you look at prior years, you'll see that we left some costs that may run out. Say in April, they say, okay, you've used up all of your flow-through money, and now you'll have to start paying them out of our general fund budget. So this is, we don't know. We, we, this was a real kind of shot in the dark for us.
Any other bridge we're gonna have to cover in the tail of the year?
I'm, I'm not particularly, yeah, I think we're in good shape budget-wise for that, looking at utilization so far. But we'll see how this plays out this first year.
I think it would be good to see some trending or some, some visibility into what we're spending now through the EduStaff.
Interestingly, the ESD did a great job of getting EduStaff in and going through a lot of processes. And they were a little behind on their, how this whole invoicing part would work. So we're now finally caught up. We've been, they've been billing behind since September when we started the program. So we should have some good numbers here. I think they find, I think we're caught up through January. So yeah, I can certainly compare some.
Yeah, Dawn just mentioned just the whole ESD arena. But again, I remember when I first came on the board, we spent a fair amount of time going back through their services. There was some change that was going on back then. Maybe as one of our working sessions, we should take a few minutes and kind of go back and revisit that.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. There's, we can show you kind of those services that we have typically purchased from them versus what the flow-through money has typically gone towards. And it's good conversation because we're actually looking at, do we, how, what is the balance there? Maybe some of those things we have typically used their people. Maybe we're big enough now. Maybe we have enough utilization. We really should be controlling these employees ourselves, having them in our system. So it is a great conversation, a good time for it because we're looking at rebalancing. So we'll get some information on that before budget time so we can look at that.
Just to add on to the substitute issue, for many years, the Central School District contracted with the ESD to secure our substitutes for us, but we processed them through our payroll. We pulled out of that and did our own substitutes for a number of years. The districts around us did not. Because we felt at the time that we could recruit subs that wanted to work in Central and do just as good a job. That has proven to be a more difficult hurdle as time has passed. So doing a consortium and trying to get substitutes that are willing to work not only in Central, but also in Dallas or maybe Salem expands our pool. We still have subs that are loyal to the fault to Central School District and only want to work for us, and we still accommodate them.
Sounds like that combined with the sick leave and PERS tracking is a more efficient answer. It's maybe coming across to not getting some of the visibility. I mean, you all are, you know, one of micromanaged, but some visibility, maybe at the overall ESD level. You know, an occasional, an annual check-in on that.
Yeah.
But you, you all are doing anyhow just maybe a briefing of the board and a reminder how it works.
So is it another piece of this is when we're doing the Hall of Cart thing, they keep a percentage of the money that is allocated to us even if we don't purchase services from them? They take a, so this, we're using, we're using our own money that they would normally stack.
We are, well, they would normally actually write us a check. If you look on the revenue piece, it says, county apportioned. What is called is item number R21021, the Revenue Ed Service District Apportionment. So you'll see where we've actually gotten that money, actual revenue. We get, we get deposits from them. And now we don't see budgeted zero to come that way.
Right.
So, yeah. But oh yeah, they'll keep a cut of anything they do for us, believe me.
Any other questions?
I guess that one. On the, on the 310, was there a professional development where you tried to bring somebody in and it didn't happen? Or is that happening later?
Um, that, that is there for some things that are happening later. There was, and I think part of that is, yeah, I'll, I'll double-check on that because I, it's partially that some things were budgeted that haven't yet occurred. There's, there's a beauty, so we're not, but I.
Glad you continue, were you continuing the GLAD training or something?
A lot of that was coming out of our, obviously, our title funds and some of our other professional development funds. So I, and I'm not exactly sure which contracts were scheduled to be out there, but I can look that up.
Thanks, Cease.
Thank you.
Good question.
So I guess we're up to you.
Uh, I just have a, a few things. As, as Cease said, I just want to publicly thank the community. It is, it was great to wake up with a passing of measure 101. So again, I just want to reiterate to our community, thank you for going out and at least getting out to vote, not only in our community but across the state. So that was a, one less thing to worry about, especially as we talk about the financial situation that I continue to learn more and more about every day in this position. So I'm, I'm very happy about that. We have started, as you all know, the, the search for the new principal because Ms. Job is, Mrs. Job is retiring. And so we, uh, we appreciate all that she is doing for us, but do actually take those next steps in, in finding the next Central High School principal. So we have started that. Today, we have, as of now, 20 candidates.
Twenty.
And so we are in the process of reviewing to potentially bring in initial ones next week for the first round. And so we will continue to share with you in the Friday reports as we move forward with those. But we're, we feel good so far in what we have seen on paper. As I, as I always say, I think it's a first step and have really worked with the staff at the high school. They have given us some great ideas and have continued to work with them as we go through this process together. So we're, we're excited to begin, begin this, that process. And then the second piece is just a little bit on, as I shared, just with graduation rates. So there's positive news. We are again within our four-year cohort graduation rates above the state average. The state average this year was, and again, this is graduation rates from 1617, so it would have been the, the, the spring of 2017 graduate cohorts. The four-year cohort for the statewide is 76.7. And our graduation rates this year for our, our four-year cohort for 1617 were 83, truly 83.7 is the exact number that, that we are. I do want to reiterate, it is a 3% drop. We did have graduation rates in the 1516 year of 86%. But again, as I've talked with Ms. Job and, and we continue to have these conversations, I think a couple of things. The last three years, you guys have seen in the data, there was a major shift in data cleanup. Part of that is the, the pieces that we have to continue to build better systems to, how do we make sure we know where all of our kids that come in to, as freshmen, because that's the year they start their four-year cohort. So just let me, let me just share a couple of data points to, to just show where we are and how just a small number in our, in our graduation can cause us to have that much of a shift. So in 1516, we had an adjusted cohort. So there are always, there's an initial cohort that comes in their freshman year. There, we, we have to track as a school district. So if, for example, Peggy transferred out of Central and decided to go to Dallas, that is not counted against us because we know where she is. She has been removed from Central and now may go to Dallas. So we get in what's called an adjusted cohort. And that adjusted cohort are, these are the kids that should be within four years that we know of, that started with you. This is the, the amount of kids that you should have in your diploma. So our adjusted cohort for 201516 was 215 students. Of those, 177 received an Oregon diploma and eight received the modified Oregon diploma. So again, that gave us the 86%. Just to give you an idea, so that means there were 30 students of that 215 that are what, that what is considered unaccounted for or considered a dropout. Technically, they are considered a dropout. And so, so that was in 1516. So for this year, the adjusted cohort, which was up, so it was 233, total of 233 students, 179 received their, the Oregon diploma, and then we had 16 on a modified. So again, that, for 1617, we have 38 students that are quote "unaccounted" or considered, considered dropout. Now, again, this is one of the pieces, I, I just say that because again, right there you can see where that's the 3%. When you, when you literally have going from 30 to 8, again, that right, right there, you're gonna get that 3% difference in graduation. So I am working with the high school. I think this is about how do we continue to get better at our systems and, and being aware of where kids are. You guys have heard me, heard me talk about easier way for our key staff to say, data-wise, where are we? I can see why it takes us time because we need to have some better systems in place. That's not, with the high school, that's just what I'm gonna say on the backside, on the data side of things, how we can track better to, to stay ahead as freshmen, sophomore, junior. So some of that, that, those are the pieces that we're gonna systematically continue to build with them. Meet with them just to have an understanding of, of what that process looks like at the building so that I can, how do we build in better systems potentially on the backside of the data to really easily, if I'm a counselor, be able to click in and say, I want to know how many kids are on track based off of freshman year. They should have this many credits by this point. How many are on track? How many are not? And so again, part of that, that system building that we will do with them. I want, do you have a question?
I'm trying to understand. So are you, are you suspecting that we're not tracking some of these unaccounted?
No, I think, I, no, I think we just, we don't know where they are. That, unfortunately, I'd like to say that we're not, we're not the only school district that is working through that. I think that's part of what I want to sit with the building and say, so walk me through what we do so I can make sure that we are, again, I want to, we will do, we always do our best to make sure that kids are accounted for, but there are times that we do, we, they transfer out, we think they're going to Dallas, they don't show up at Dallas. We have to figure out how to track them or find them. And so again, I think that's, I'm gonna be working with the building to say, what do we do right now? And how do we continue to look at those systems to better support the building? Because that's first and foremost in that process. It's really hard right now. If I look at what our counselors are having to pull, it's a lot of raw data that then they have to work through, and it probably takes them more time than necessary.
So if we were to ask, how many are unaccounted for right this minute?
That's part of my conversation, that, that I'm going to find where we are.
It's not easy.
No.
We don't know at any given month what the number is.
Correct. So again, part of that is, you know, how are we on track? You know, who came in, who, who did not, you know, those reports, part of that is a report that was sent, well, this class technically three years ago to ODE because that's the original.
That's a snapshot.
Correct. Of the original core, correct. And so again, part of that is just with, with me being new, working with the building, saying, show me what you do to see how I can make it better for them, to be honest. So we can continue to really focus on supporting our students, especially tied to, to, to graduation. Again, I, my goal is that we can catch all of them. That is sometimes very difficult. We will continue to work towards that. Obviously, with this administration and then the, the new administration coming in with those pieces. But again, I, I think it's important, I think the, the, the positive of this, that we are above the state average. We continue to watch our staff work really hard in supporting students. And I think that's, that's a huge part of this, as, as they continue to work with them, moving them toward those, those graduation requirements. So tied to that a little bit, and I know, I just want to share, really tied to the graduation rates is this past Tuesday, we had a really, well, for me, it was an amazing day of listening to students, to community members, to parents. I would say that probably one of the most authentic and honest conversations that I've engaged with in the community so far, really focusing on how do we engage youth into school so that they don't have those paths of dropping out. And we worked with an outside organization, a nonprofit out of Oregon called the Gateway to College National Network. They are focused on how are we ensuring that all youth complete high school? And they're really ready to fully participate locally in, in the economy and what that looks like. And they're specifically looking at, so this organization has, works in 20 different states. They have been fully focused on urban and suburban dropouts. They are realizing, hey, there's a lot of. And because obviously that we are their hometown, they wanted to start an authentic conversation with rural, to say, you know, what are some of the issues that you guys are seeing, and what are some things and things that maybe we can work with you to, to look at meaningful opportunities in regards to graduation and high school? We're seeing some of that with the high school success, i.e. previously Measure 98 and some of those shifts, that we're seeing on the financial side, good C T E, how do we, you know, build programs that are supporting kids both college and career-ready? But it was really good to listen to everyone in the different rooms, and I'll, if you want to share, Don, with that piece of it. But I'll tell you, it's great to have partnership. Mona, who has, the head of the Community Services Consortium, which actually, I'll be honest, is one of our key partners with kids that are struggling and may drop out, she can recapture them in, in the G E D program. The good and the bad about that is, is we may know that the kids are here doing the G E D, but they still count against us. So her and I are doing some data checking because the, the 30, because they are unaccounted, they're considered dropout, G E D. So that 30, I may be able to account for, and the 38, I may be able to account for pretty quickly, but they still don't count as towards our graduation. So the whole focus of this is really on alternative education. I would love to sit here and say that every kid, a good, a comprehensive high school, every kid will be successful. Sometimes a comprehensive high school, a large comprehensive high school can be very difficult for kids. And so how do we start having that conversation of, what I'm gonna say, an alternative path of, because we don't have that right now. The path right now is potentially, they do drop out, and then we try and reengage them in the G E D if we can't get them back into the high school. And so really starting to have that authentic conversation. This group is going around to six other communities in the rural area to ask those questions. They ask students questions like, what makes you successful? Tell us the skills that make you successful. What else might you need? And so it was really good to hear their voices of some of the struggles they, they feel in a large comprehensive, as we think about what that, can we do a model? Or what's the conversation that, that they will do as they go across the state of Oregon in the rural, to say, you know, here's some approaches, policymakers, of something to think about in the rural areas. As I've shared with you, I came from a very large school district. We had six different alternative programs. Right now, to some degree, we don't have any here, but I think that's, the conversation that we started was pretty authentic in what that might look like in the future. So again, I just want to thank, A, the students for their voices. They were very honest with us. Both the students, we actually went to the power peers and had some pretty authentic conversation with them. We had the, the group of students in Mona's program that were really transparent with us as well, and great conversation with our community members. And the families that showed up during the evening gave us some, just beginning steps that we can continue to say, how do we have this conversation? And then what might that alternative education program look like in the future as we look at budgets, as we look at partners, if there's other funding that might come forward? I think that's a, a conversation that we'll continue to have. But again, some first steps, because again, it was sort of that perfect storm of, in a good way, right here, our graduation, and, you know, here's this conversation of how do we continue to reengage kids that may struggle in, in a comprehensive high school? And, I mean, I think that's anywhere, whether rural or urban, some kids, it's just really hard to be successful in a large comprehensive high school. And that's it for, for me.
All right. Thank you. So that comes up to my report about upcoming activities. You'll see in your packet that it says March 5th is our next board meeting. We did get an email from Cece, and she explained that there's two spots that are open on the Budget Committee. So if that's in your zone, which one of them is in mine, I'm actually thinking about somebody to go arm wrestle and try and get him to come and be on our Budget Committee. One that's not on here is the Bonds Ballot Measure, what?
Are we going to Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday, as I said.
Yeah. So that's on Thursday, the 8th. So if you're signed up for that-
It's just you and me this time.
Oh, it's just us?
This time.
All right. And so with that, we're down to the approval of the Consent Agenda, but-
So we don't have a work session, KLC this morning?
We do not.
No. You want one?
Not particularly.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
It's a short term.
All right. So next up is approval of the Consent Agenda, but it also has a, a, a thing in here about an out-of-state field trip request. I noticed that Mr. Probst came, so maybe he'd like to say something before we just, don't want to make you feel like we don't welcome you and just approve it without maybe hearing a little spiel.
It's nice that you trust me. But yeah, I did want to say a little bit about field trip. Let me read you the educational rationale I wrote real quick, and then say a few things about travel with music students. In Oregon, young music students might look to the city of Portland as the hotbed of music in the northwestern United States. In a way, they would be right. Over the past 20 years, Oregon has become a destination for touring acts, and the hometown band of bands like The Semerists, Big Martini, and many more. But that's an incomplete picture of music in the Pacific Northwest. Long before the heavy reverb and simple chord progressions of the modern pop, art pop, came from Portland, Jimi Hendrix was a kid in Seattle with a Fender guitar and no music teacher. His unique style of play would change the sound of American music. Two to three generations later, a lonely son of divorced parents channeled his emotions into three-chord songs, and Nirvana was created. And through them, the grunge movement was started, making bands like Soundgarden, Pearl Jam, Alice in Chains, Stone Temple Pilots, and the Foo Fighters, household names. Seattle's had a profound impact on the music of not just our region, but the world as a whole. It stands not only as a hot, as a hub of music, but of visual art, culinary art, science, and technology. Through this band trip, students will be able to experience the societal impacts of Seattle, Washington. That is my educational rationale. Interpersonally, I have traveled with the band, this is my 12th year, being the guy lucky enough to be the band director for Central School District. It's, it's been a journey, and I've taken kids to Alaska, to Southern Oregon, to New Orleans twice. They come back from the trip energized, not just for my class, but to look at the ways where they just were and where they just studied pertains to American history, and, you know, to an extent, the music history of that spot. We went to New Orleans two years ago. Great trip, totally survived, one of the more wicked flu-out breaks I've ever had on a band trip. This year, we're bringing Angela Billman. She's a registered nurse. They came back energized about music, they came back practicing harder, they came back working. And you see the thumbprint of that trip, every football and basketball game the band is at, and we play a New Orleans tune called Do What You Wanna. And I know snowball's been talked about a lot. The whole idea of starting a song far away from the stage and walking through the center of the crowd is about as New Orleans as it gets. And I can't wait to see what Seattle does for our students. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, don't forget to mention the Christmas concert up on the balcony. He had the jazz band up on one of our balconies the morning of the last day of school before winter break, and they played magically.
Oh, thank you.
The kids were gathered around, it was like Courier &amp; I's print or something, it was poor.
She said the Christmas concert, my head went to the auditorium right away, that's why I was like, huh?
That was cool to hear talking about.
Thank you so much, Jane.
So, we don't have any personal recommendations?
You can appropriate themselves.
So, we're ready for motion.
There's a retirement, and I have to fire.
So, we can second it?
No.
Oh, I missed one.
I'll look to through the Consent Agenda as presented.
I don't miss sense.
I was second.
Okay. So we have all three. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise the right hand. Motion passes unanimously, and that brings us to comments by individual board, since we have no business in this. Anybody got anything to say?
I got one.
Okay.
Seems that our governor wants to allocate, what, $300 million towards hands-on technical training?
Thanks, Ed.
I'm not sure of the number. I don't know where the money would come from exactly, but that's one of the few things that Kate Brown and I have ever agreed on, so it's a great day.
Yeah? Okay.
Steve, were you waiting for that?
Yes, I just wanted to add, before you left, I had the opportunity with my sons to go to New Orleans for Hurricane Katrina relief. And we took one, one Friday evening, both times that we went down, and we went to, to the heart there.
French Quarter?
Right into the French Quarter, had dinner, four-star restaurant. I looked down the way, my sons have ordered chicken nuggets and a hamburger.
Oh, no.
But the take that my son had on it was that, and all those, they, they went all the way through and all the way back, and it was just, he's, my, my son's take was, Drew's was, there's just this wonderful music on each and every block, and it's not just one thing, it's multiple things all the way down and all the way back. And he was just, you know, he's not even a, been in band or anything like that, but he was just so impressed by all the music. So it's a pretty amazing thing if you have an opportunity to do that.
It can be overwhelming for the nerdy types.
So thank you for, for giving the, the, the kids and the band and, and all those things the opportunity to do those things. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I want to say again, thank you to all our staff members, our administrators, and everybody that, that, that worked so hard to make this district happen. And I guess I don't do this right now. I gotta read this.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. So, under the provisions of O R S 192, 660, 690, open meeting law, the Board of Directors will recess to executive session for the following purposes. Two A, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, and two B, to consider the dismissal or discipline of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or agent unless he or she requests an open meeting. Specific information discussed in executive session shall not be made public and shall remain undisclosed. We do not anticipate any action when we come back in.
Correct.
So we are in executive session. I don't think they have, no, I bang it when we're done, right?
Correct.
Okay. So let's take, you guys want five minutes? Anybody got it? Or we're ready to go, sir?